No, adjourn the meeting.
Special meeting.
Adjourn the meeting. Adjourn ours for special meetings.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Ms. Payne.
Yes.
Ms. Jessling.
Yes.
Ms. Aapolo.
Yes.
Ms. Marchaza.
Yes.
Ms. Cook.
Yes.
Meeting is adjourned at 6:57.
If anyone would like to sign up for public comment and hasn't had a chance to do that, we do not have forms with us today. So Mrs. Essie, she's right in the middle there. She's waving. She will sign you up on her laptop. So please just line up with her if you could spread the word and we'll announce it again a little closer too as well. But we have, it's 6:57. We have a couple of minutes left if you would like to speak.
Hi, how are you? Good. Thanks for being here.
Good evening. The September 10th, 2024 regular meeting of the Mentor Exempted Village Board of Education is called to order. This meeting is being held in accordance with Section 3313.15 of the Ohio Revised Code. Please place your mobile phones on silent mode for the meeting. Mr. Wade, please call the roll.
Ms. Aapolo.
Here.
Ms. Jessling.
Present.
Ms. Marchaza.
Present.
Ms. Payne.
Here.
Ms. Cook.
Here. Thank you. And please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, sovereign, just as we're all.
Thank you. If we could all take a moment of silence for the recent school shootings. Since our last meeting, there has been school shooting victims in both Georgia and Nebraska, and our thoughts are with them. Thank you. I would like to welcome everyone to the September 10th, 2024 regular meeting of the Mentor Exempted Village Board of Education. Prior to this evening, each board member has received for their review and consideration the agenda and materials associated with each agenda item for the board's approval via the district's paperless Board of Education Agenda System Board Docs. The public can access this agenda through the school district's website, and the agenda is available through the district's website for public viewing the Sunday prior to the board meeting. Board members have the opportunity to call the superintendent and chief financial officer for information concerning agenda items and to request, if needed, additional information. There are two places on the agenda where the board entertains comments from the community. The first hearing of the public is dedicated to those who wish to address the board on agenda items only. The second hearing of the public is dedicated to those who wish to address the board on any subject, whether it be an item on the agenda or another topic. To participate in the hearing of the public section, interested speakers must sign up prior to the start of the meeting. Signups are available online through the school district's website or onsite prior to the start of the meeting. You will be called to the microphone when it is your turn to speak, and at that time, we ask that you please state your name and address questions to the board president. Each person may speak only once per segment, and comments are limited to three minutes. The purpose of the hearing of the public is for our community members to address the board. The board continues to welcome feedback from the community as an important component to conducting business. This is an information gathering opportunity for the board and administration so we can work to best serve our community. If at the end of the public participation, we do not make a statement, please know this doesn't demonstrate a lack of care for comments shared by our community. Rather, we want to be thoughtful in our approach, and we will provide a response in a timely manner when appropriate. In an effort to maintain an orderly meeting based on Ohio Revised Code 2917.12 and Board Policy 0169.1, any person doing any act which obstructs or interferes with the conduct or orderly progress of the board meeting will be warned and/or removed from the meeting. This meeting is being shown live and can be viewed on demand on our YouTube channel, Cardinal TV, Mentor Ohio. Thank you. Because we do not have district highlights and recognitions this evening, we will move on to the approval of minutes. Yet, we do not have any minutes for approval, so we will move on to the hearing of the public on agenda items only.
Our first two speakers, the first one will be Lindsay Wall, and then it will be Mackenzie McCallister.
Good evening. I wanted to speak on two topics tonight, the first one being the contract with Crossroads. And I would just like to address how much, how important Crossroads is to our school district and what a significant role they play. I know my oldest has utilized the Crossroads counselors in our school, and they do more work than you would think, not just for our students, but our staff as well. And they're also a huge part of our community, working with families across the school district. September is Suicide Prevention Awareness Month, and coincidentally, today, September 10th, is World Suicide Prevention Day. And I wanted to read the post that Crossroads had actually put up on their social media today. "September 10th is World Suicide Prevention Day. You are not alone. Support is always available." The crisis text line is text 4H O P E, for hope, to 741741. And I think that's a very important resource to have shared out. It's so, I cannot stress this enough, that we take mental health so seriously, and we recognize that everyone is going through their own thing, and there is no way to tell what someone else is going through. And I cannot, again, stress this enough, that we make comments in this space that may not hurt other people, whether it is a student, an adult, a teacher, a staff member, your neighbor, whoever it is, just to remember that everyone is going through something, and we have to just be kind. The second topic I wanted to address briefly is the vote for the delegate for the OSBA conference meeting. And I know that last year, the vote, it was just like a quick thing, and I know Mr. Tuttle ended up being the delegate then. And I just wanted to express my feelings on that, that we elect somebody who actually supports OSBA and supports their mission and their goals. And I believe that we do have board members who have, multiple times, they have expressed that they do not support OSBA. So I don't feel like it would be right to elect them as a delegate or an alternative when they have so clearly stated that they do not support OSBA. Thank you.
Thank you.
After Ms. McCallister, it will be Jennifer Hurlaud.
Good evening. I'd like to revisit HB 68. Correct me if I'm wrong, I believe this is your area of expertise, Ms. Marchaza. I brought to the attention of the board during our last meeting that HB 68, which went into effect immediately on August 6, 2024.
Mrs. McCallister, I'm sorry, can we pause the time for a moment? HB 68 is not on our agenda.
It's old business.
It's not on our agenda.
So policies aren't on the agenda?
No, not every policy is on the agenda, but you can speak at the end of the meeting, at our second hearing of the public.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight on agenda items. I'd like to start out by asking some really quite simple, yet highly effective, questions. Why would you renegotiate a $605,000 contract for a company, Crossroads, that has a 2.7-star rating on Google? Have any of you read any of the reviews? I doubt it. Have you screened the staff who goes into the schools and congregates with people's children? What are their credentials? One of your Crossroads employees that I had the displeasure of emailing while my son was in your schools had a gay pride logo with a Mentor Cardinal on the top of her emails and pronouns in her bio, or signature of her emails. Why are we accepting gifts from Planet Fitness? They're known to allow men in girls' locker rooms and showers, but not gifts from concerned taxpayers and/or parents. No gifts from them. I want to nominate Annie Payne to go represent the city of Mentor in the school, the school district, to go speak at the school board convention, seeing as Annie is a huge proponent and fighter for parental rights, seeing as Craig Heath admitted that we have three leftists on the board and how polarized this community is. Ray Charles was alive today, he'd be able to see it. I don't know how any of us could expect to have a diversity of opinions here when we're only focused on pushing leftist ideology, admitted leftist ideology. The polarization we see in these meetings will hinder future levies, and how any of you up here could expect any levies to pass when you have consistently lost the trust in the community you say you listen to is beyond me. Transportation issues, this was on the agenda, the director. I know, Ms. Marchaza, you ran your campaign on fixing that. So far, all you fixed is getting the director of transportation to resign. She was the lowest-paid employee in the district, making only 70, well, not only, $73,600 per year, quite arguably the hardest job in the district. Nutritional Services makes $88,000. Just making it known what's really going on here in the Mentor schools, since some people can't make it here. And I want to know why we have counselors promoting gay pride and not any other clubs. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our last speaker is Susan Sednick.
Good evening, everybody. I just, I wanted to speak about the field trip. There's a couple of overnight field trips that were on the agenda. And while I think that a trip to New York and Chicago is, well, dangerous anyway, but it's nice that there's like something for the kids to do, but I would say, I would not allow it, and I hope you say no, just for the simple fact of, I think, because you cannot promise that there will not be a man or a boy sleeping with, next to or in the same room as a girl on these field trips. I think it's irresponsible to ask students to spend the night somewhere, and, you know, parents are expecting that their kids are going to be safe. I would expect my daughters to be put into a room and a bed that they're sharing with other girls. And I think if you cannot promise that, that should not be approved. This happened in other communities where the parents have found out that their daughter is, you know, in bed with a guy, and that's wrong. It's unsafe, and I think student safety is the most important thing. So I'd ask that you not approve that. And perhaps this is for the second talk later, but again, I feel like on the agenda should always be school safety. And I think that we had a real problem last week with girls trying to defend their space. I would ask that, I hope everybody on this board takes note of every girl that was in that bathroom defending their space, and I would encourage you.
Mrs. Sednick, let's save that. Thank you.
I'll save it then.
Thank you.
That concludes public participation.
Next, we have the superintendent's report and recommendations.
Good evening, everyone. We've been dealing with several issues in our transportation department at the beginning of the school year, beyond the normal route changes and delays the first couple of days of school. At our August 15th meeting, I indicated that we were fully staffed in transportation. We also had five bus driver subs in place to meet our demand on a daily basis. Between August 16th and August 23rd, we ended up with five medical leaves in our driver pool that took all of the subs during our first few days of school. By August 30th, we had a bus driver retire and one take another role at one of our buildings in the district. We posted three additional bus operator positions the first week of school to address these concerns. We have hired a couple of more drivers, but with routing needs, we still need more. So here's my annual plea. If you or someone you know would like to become a bus driver or a bus aide, please see the postings on our website to apply. We are also hosting another Drive the Bus event on Saturday, September 21st, from 8:00 to 10:00 a.m. So if you would like to test it out as you're going through the application process, we would love to have you there that morning. More information will be on our website for that. We also had the unexpected resignation of our transportation supervisor on the second day of school, which has caused issues in the transportation office. She was one of two people trained in the new routing software and the one that built the routes in the system, so we lost a ton of operational knowledge with her sudden departure. Over the last three weeks, we had six to seven district administrators filling in at the service building to answer phone calls, review bus stops, and help change routes based on our bus driver input after driving the routes the first couple of days of school. Our admin team has been incredible in an attempt to pick up the pieces and learn all of the ins and outs of transportation, literally on the fly. Two members of our technology team, Mr. Lynch and Mr. Woodworth, have learned the new routing software system quickly and have been able to change bus stops, reroute buses, and address safety needs based on driver and parent requests. We posted the transportation coordinator position immediately and have already interviewed 12 individuals to fill this role. We are conducting final round interviews on Thursday and hope to have a new leader for the transportation department in the next few days. In the meantime, the entire district admin team has spent time working out of the transportation office during the morning and afternoon route times. We've spent most of our time reviewing the over 600 bus stop change requests that have been submitted through the form on our website. They've been looking at the routes created in the new system, identifying current bus stop locations, and working with drivers to determine if changes are safe and efficient in order to make our needed changes. I've been looking at all of the appeals to the decisions made on those stop changes. I've been going to the neighborhoods, on the stop locations, observing how the buses travel through the route and where the students are in relation to the stop. I look at the entire area from a safety standpoint first, and then an efficiency standpoint second, and write down the observations I make for each appeal. Unfortunately, we are not able to make every change that parents are requesting. If there's a true safety consideration, we are working with the drivers to identify a better stop. A majority of the requests have been to create a stop at a student's home. Simply put, we do not have the driver availability to be able to accommodate these types of requests. The timing on our routes is already extremely tight, and even the smallest adjustment can lead to even greater delays in our drop-off and pickup times than we are experiencing already. We've created group and corner stops based on the location of the students in the neighborhood to make our stops as safe and efficient as possible. I know we're not going to make everyone happy on the decisions we have to make, but that's what we have to do at this point in time. I know there are still several other requests and appeals that we are working on right now. So if you have not heard back yet, please know that we are trying to get through all of these as quickly as possible. I'm not sure which route I will be on first thing in the morning, but I will be standing on a corner somewhere in a neighborhood looking at routes. I can guarantee you that. One other transportation item that I want to address as well is the non-public routes. We know we have some very long routes currently running with our non-publics. We're continuing to look at ways to cut those route times down to an appropriate length. The main issue that impacted the length of these routes is that for the first day of school, we had eight students signed up for transportation for one of our parochial schools. For the next day, we had a list of 79 students that needed transportation from that school. We had to completely redo those non-public routes with the drivers that we had assigned when it was just eight students, so that obviously dramatically impacted those route times. Again, we are working on a couple of adjustments now to reduce those times here in the near future, and our hope is with the additional drivers that we're trying to hire, that we will be able to reduce the time of those routes, both morning and afternoon. I do want to thank the administrative team, Ms. LaPointe, Ms. Wallace, all of our bus drivers, and the entire transportation department for their hard work in keeping our buses running as we work through the leadership transition here at the beginning of the school year.
Mr. Heath, thank you so much for all of that extra time that you've been putting in, and to all of the administrators and the transportation department. I have received so many calls and emails about, you know, the superintendent was just at my stop, and, you know, they're really, they feel that you've been heard, you've given them a lot of extra attention firsthand, looking at the situation on a case by case, and it's much appreciated. Thank you for that work.
I'd like to echo that thanks, too, and just point out, I don't know if, I think you didn't mention it yet, but I actually got, I started in communications again today about the bus being late, and I know that was an issue, too, for some parents who, we were waiting and waiting. And we knew, of course, the bus would be coming, but we were accustomed last year to getting those texts or emails when the bus is going to be late. Those, I got one today, so thank you for getting those moving as well.
One additional thing I'll add to that conversation. Again, Mr. Lynch and Mr. Woodworth have been absolutely amazing at getting into this new software system and being able to really dig into some of the efficiency components of that. One of the things that we recognized fairly quickly was that the timing on the routes just wasn't feasible. And their conversations with the company, they've identified a couple of fixes that we're hoping to implement here relatively soon to be able to update the timing of things for pickup and drop-off times in Infinite Campus here in the near future. Those timing issues, I think, were immediately throwing things at least 10 minutes off, if not more. And there are a couple of other things that we've learned about the system that we can continue to tweak and implement to make sure that our timing is pretty accurate here moving forward. So we look forward to all of the capabilities of this new software system, which really, I think, has kind of saved us here at the beginning of this school year. I'm not sure we'd be able to pull this together with the old software that we were using.
Can I just ask a question? I don't know if you are able to give us an update on replacing our director. How's that going?
Yeah, so we've interviewed 12. We're bringing three additional people back on Thursday, so we hope to have an answer for a new leader here. It'd be nice if we could get a commitment by the end of this week.
Great. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the board, and Mr. Wade. I have the following recommendations listed under the consent agenda and recommend approval of items 6A1 through 6A3.
So moved. Second. Any discussion? Mr. Wade, please call the roll.
Who is the second?
Me.
Thanks. Ms. Jessling.
Yes.
Ms. Aapolo.
Yes.
Ms. Marchaza.
Yes.
Ms. Payne.
Yes.
Ms. Cook.
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Madam President, members of the board, and Mr. Wade, I am recommending approval of the agreement for services with Crossroads Health.
So moved. Second. Any discussion?
I had just a couple, just a quick comment I wanted to make. I know that with the signature health contract, I wanted to ensure that the parental signature was required before any kind of counseling took place. And I know we adjusted that before the last meeting. I just wanted to reiterate that that's also the case with Crossroads. I made sure that parental signature is required before anybody is seen with Crossroads. So just wanted to note that. That's it.
Clause 2.2.
Yep.
Any more discussion? Mr. Wade, please call the roll.
Ms. Jessling.
Yes.
Ms. Marchaza.
Yes.
Ms. Aapolo.
Yes.
Ms. Payne.
Yes.
Ms. Cook.
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Madam President, members of the board, and Mr. Wade, I am recommending approval of the agreement for admission of tuition pupils with ESC of Northeast Ohio.
So moved. Second. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Ms. Payne.
Yes.
Ms. Jessling.
Yes.
Ms. Aapolo.
Yes.
Ms. Marchaza.
Yes.
Ms. Cook.
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Madam President, members of the board, and Mr. Wade, I am recommending approval of the addendum to the 2023 through 2025 service agreement with the ESC of the Western Reserve.
So moved. Second. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Ms. Jessling.
Yes.
Ms. Marchaza.
Yes.
Ms. Aapolo.
Yes.
Ms. Payne.
Yes.
Ms. Cook.
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Madam President, members of the board, and Mr. Wade, I am recommending approval of agenda item C1 related to certified personnel and C2 through C4, all related to human resource matters.
So moved. Second. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Ms. Aapolo.
Yes.
Ms. Jessling.
Yes.
Ms. Marchaza.
Yes.
Ms. Payne.
Yes.
Ms. Cook.
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
I am also recommending approval of agenda item D related to administrative staff resignations.
So moved. Second. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Ms. Payne.
Yes.
Ms. Jessling.
Yes.
Ms. Iaplo?
Yes.
Ms. Marchaza?
Yes.
Ms. Cook?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
This concludes my portion of tonight's agenda. Thank you.
The first item under Board Business is the Approval of Board Member in-Service Attendance at the 2024 OSBA Capital Conference and Trade Show.
So moved. Second. Any discussion?
I just wanted to say that actually Rose and I will be on behalf of OSBCC, which I'm an executive member on that board as well. Rose and I will be teaching a class for OSBA Capital Conference called No Cell Belt Bell. So we will obviously be in attendance. So I just wanted to put that out there. It should be a pretty good class, and we're looking forward to it. Great, thanks.
And we'll make sure we have that cell phone policy maybe on for first reading next month so that we can talk about that then too.
Perfect.
Mr. Wade, please call the roll.
Ms. Jessling?
Yes.
Ms. Marchaza?
Yes.
Ms. Iaplo?
Yes.
Ms. Payne?
Yes.
Ms. Cook?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
The second item under Board Business is the Appointment of a Delegate and an Alternate to the OSBA Annual Business Meeting on November 11, 2024. Maybe we could take these one at a time. So appointing a delegate. I would like to nominate Mrs. Marchaza as our liaison for, as our liaison already. I feel that she would be perfect for that position.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just had a comment. So I don't, I personally don't care who the delegate is. Doesn't make a difference to me. What does count is that we have, like we've done the past two years, we have a conversation in the open with the public, well, with public in attendance, an open meeting, in reference to any of the items and the way that the delegate is going to vote on those items. Just out of transparency to the public, I think they deserve to know how our delegate is going to vote on items. Like the one year it was, you know, there's-
I expected as much, yeah. Yes, and that would be Board Business for our next meeting. So prior to. So thank you for bringing that up. Are there any other nominations for delegate?
I'd like to nominate Rose.
No.
Just, I think she'd do a good job at it. But I also don't care, like, I don't think it's that big of a, I don't think it's that big of a responsibility since we have that conversation in the open with the open meeting about it. It doesn't really make a difference to me.
Okay. Mr. Wade, can you help us proceed here with, are we?
Or could we do, like, Rose, would you like to be the alternative? And then Ms. Marchaza could be the delegate.
I don't have an opinion either way. If that's something you-
That's acceptable to me.
That's something you-
So we have a nomination for delegate for Mrs. Marchaza and then is your nomination for alternate?
Yeah, that works.
Is anyone in opposition to that?
Nope.
No, that sounds good.
Great.
Yeah, sounds great.
Thank you.
All right. Nice and easy. We all have agreement there. So our delegate for OSBA will be Mrs. Marchaza and our alternate will be Mrs. Iaplo. Thank you both. Let's see. We will now have our legislative report from Ms. Marchaza.
Thank you. All right. So the General Assembly is still on recess until after the election, but I do have some other updates. One from the State Board. Late last month, the Ohio Controlling Board, which is a bipartisan panel of state lawmakers from the House and the Senate that approves state's spending, approved a $4.66 million amount to cover a budget shortfall that was created when the ODEW was formed. It's basically, funding should have been coming to the State Board and instead it ended up going over the newly created ODEW. So that left them with a budget shortfall. So this amount is not nearly enough to cover that shortfall, but it is going to help and mainly, I understand this, to be going to help with the part of the background checking process that the State Board does for school employees across the state. The ODEW has a public meeting on Thursday, September 19, and they do run those live on the Ohio Channel if you're interested in watching that meeting. Just because the House and Senate are in recess, that does not mean they're not working. First of all, just a couple of bills that were signed into law by the governor. Governor DeWine signed HB 147 on July 24. This one goes into effect on October 24. This bill was originally created to fix a loophole in the Ohio Revised Code that pertained to teacher misconduct where basically the law didn't, as it was, didn't require a school employee's misconduct to be reported to the state superintendent if that individual retired during a disciplinary investigation, which is just a very strange loophole. So this was meant to fix that. It kind of sailed through pretty quickly without much, you know, no opponent testimony or resistance. And so in that sense, it was kind of a ripe-for amendments being added to it. So that being the case, some sports-related provisions were added as well as some provisions around implementing some flexibility for students who receive a couple of different scholarships. So let's see. So the, so it's kind of, again, another mish-mash bill where these kind of come together under a single bill but have to do with very different areas of education. The first, the former that I mentioned, ESCs must, in public schools, must notify the state superintendent regarding a licensed employee who retires during a disciplinary investigation for misconduct. So that's a must. And then the scholarships, I'm not going to get into too much because they don't apply to us too-too directly. But then there are some other parts of this bill that have to do with home-educated students and their ability to participate in interscholastic athletics. It just has some allowances built in for those students. And it also, completely different part of the bill, there's a requirement in here that schools accept cash at all school-affiliated events, so athletic events, theater events, everything. And the only exception is that we can still add a processing fee if necessary for tickets purchased online or by credit card. And then student ticket prices must be less than adult ticket prices. So those are all absolute musts in HB 147. HB 214 is known as the Red Act. It stands for Religious Expression Days. Similarly, this one was signed on July 24. It will be effective on October 24. Effective on 24th, October 24, but the policy requirement must be fulfilled by January 22. So even though it's in effect, we still have some time to pull this together. The gist with this one is basically, what it says is, it prohibits Ohio's public schools from soliciting or requiring students, faculty, or prospective employees to commit to specific beliefs, affiliations, ideals, or principles concerning political movements, which that was the original intent behind the bill when it was introduced into the House. So a lot of this, you know, we already do, and a lot of this is already built into teacher licensure anyway and our hiring processes. But basically, it says we have to have this policy on our books. And I'm sure Neola will help us update ours accordingly. This applies to both teachers and students. And again, we have until January 22. I think it's also important to kind of point out too what it does not apply to because the legislature did provide some clarification for us on what is not prohibited. And that includes a district or school's authority to require a student or employee to comply with a federal or state law. And that includes anti-discrimination laws. It does not include an educator's academic freedom. It does not include an educator's ability to research or write publications about specific beliefs, ideals, et cetera. So those are two new laws here in Ohio. They also have the ability to, the lawmakers have the ability to introduce legislation even though they're on recess. So we've got one, two, three new ones. HB 659 is, regards actually water safety, being in and around water. And it's asking public schools and private schools to require certain instruction about water safety to prevent drowning. Senate Bill 309 permits community foundations to be trustees of endowments and other charitable funds received by public schools and to classify some funds held by community foundation trustees as institutional funds. If that moves forward, perhaps Mr. Wade could shed some light on how that will impact us, but let's just see where that one goes. We're getting real close to lame duck session here, so we'll see what happens. And then finally, Senate Bill 311, which would permit students to concurrently receive an Ed Choice Scholarship or Pilot Project Scholarship as well as an Autism or John Peterson Special Needs Scholarship. And that's the end of my report.
Thank you very much. Next, we have the Student Achievement Report with Mrs. Jessling.
Thank you.
A new school year has begun. Staff members happily welcomed 6,750 students to freshly cleaned classrooms with polished surfaces and sparkling windows on August 20. The IT department checked and double-checked the digital infrastructure to support the learning in pre-K through 12th grades as well as the vital software and subscriptions used by staff and administration to connect with parents and track student growth. It's an amazing complement of technology with the very human enterprise of teaching and learning. Those many dedicated hands work together to make the opening day as seamless as possible. And again, Mr. Lynch and Mr. Woodworth are key to that prospect. An important focus on optimizing our resources while offering high-quality classroom learning at every grade level has been a key discussion point for the district. Where numbers have increased in specific spots, Mr. Heath looks carefully at strategic supplemental staffing to support student success. Let's look at class sizes at the elementary and middle school levels for this new semester. Elementary school class sizes K through 12. Kindergarten has an average of 21.3 students. Outliers are Sterling Morton with 24 and Bellflower with 24.3. First grade class sizes average at 21.1, second grade class sizes at 21.6. For elementary school class sizes in grades 3 to 5, third grade has an average of 21 students, fourth grade an average of 22.9, with Hopkins as an outlier with 26.3, and fifth grade with an average of 23.4. In grades 6 and 7 in the middle school, class size numbers are lower to support success in that critical adjustment to the secondary level. Sixth and seventh grade classes use the TEAM model at both Memorial and Shore with its proven track record in laying a strong foundation that pays dividends as children transition to adolescence. Sixth grade averages 18.6 per classroom and seventh grade at 20.4. In eighth grade, middle school class sizes, the numbers rise to an average of 25.9. Next month, we'll look closely at our enrollments at some of our high school classes such as our content areas in state-tested courses, advanced placement, CTE programs, and college credit plus. We're celebrating a champion in our midst. Bella Worgo, a Mentor High School junior, recently represented the United States at the International Federation of Sport Climbing, Rock Climbing Youth World Championship in Ga'yang, China. Bella qualified as the USA Youth National Championships in July by earning a number-two position in the country. Bella represented our nation and placed eighth in the world in her final rock climbing competition. The IFSC was created in 2007 as a continuation of the International Council for Competition Climbing. This is sixth grade camp week for Shore and Memorial Middle Schools. Our Memorial group is coming home tomorrow while our Shore sixth graders will start their camp experience tomorrow morning and return home on Friday. Mentors 11- and 12-year-olds have a unique outdoor learning experience each fall. For many, it may be the first time to be away from home for a few days without their families. The students and teachers will be staying at Camp Fitch, a YMCA site right on Lake Erie, providing a perfect learning laboratory. It's about an hour's drive east of here, just past the Pennsylvania line. We adopted the new strategic plan for Mentor Schools at our last meeting. It emphasizes the value of student-centered experiential learning, and I can't think of a better program in that spirit than our sixth-grade camp. There's no doubt that the opportunity for 12-year-olds to learn in the outdoors and to gain skills in teamwork, self-reliance, and personal responsibility gives lasting benefits. Safety considerations, including a nurse on-site and extensive planning, are at the foundation of the program. Meaningful lessons are embedded in an exciting new setting to awaken an engaging level of learning that would be impossible to replicate in the confines of the traditional classroom. It's a screen-free, natural setting that might be quite a departure from routines for many kids. During their sessions, our students complete activities revolving around the following topics. Camp Fitch staff teaches horsemanship, the heritage farm, canoeing, the challenge course, rock climbing, archery, and nature hiking. Our mentor teachers oversee pioneer crafts, survival and fire building, Lake Erie study, outdoor cooking, reptiles and amphibians, the pond study, and the owl pellet study. Of course, there are kid-friendly meals, games, and team-building activities that add a special element of fun. Did you know that the Mentor Camp Program has a 44-year history? It all started back in 1980 when Mr. Rick Danberg, an elementary physical education teacher who had worked at Interlock and Music Camp in Michigan, had a unique set of skills and the background to design the experience. Working with the sixth-grade teachers to combine hands-on learning with a great chance for students to build friendships and learn teamwork, he set it all in motion at Camp Whitewood. A special partnership with Slippery Rock University's Outdoor Education Program brought student counselors to the camp to help and guide all the sixth graders each week. Mr. Danberg ran this program for 10 years, complete with his musical gifts that included bugling, reveley, and taps each morning and night. Keeping the most essential elements, other dedicated teachers, beginning with Mrs. Ellen Webb, continued the traditions that evolved to be the current program for our students. Ask Mentor alumni about their fondest camp memories, and they often share special stories about activities from a beach scavenger hunt and archery to creek walking and tie-dying shirts. shirts. Many said that making new friends and sharing a space helped kids leave their comfort zones and that they really enjoyed interacting with others. From Erica, who said with a smile, "All the activities were so amazing. I remember that the kids all took turns helping in the mess hall." From Danielle, "I learned how to do square dancing, which was fun. I did archery for the first time and I learned how to use a compass." Emma said that she loved canoeing and bunking with her friends in the cabin. She felt the experiences helped the college housing transition when she was older. Canoeing with a fellow camper reinforced the power of teamwork. Matthew said, "I was also partial to the archery and the hiking." April remembers having the chance to hold a large snake for the first time. Shara recalled that her daughter did not want them to write any letters to her because she thought that would be silly and babyish. And all her friends got letters, and that was the first thing she asked when they picked her up, "Why didn't we write?" They made sure they wrote letters to their son when he went two years later. Tim shared that he truly enjoyed hiking, canoeing, and exploring the area. He thought it was a wonderful learning experience. Michael recalled making candles, and Carrie remembered the delicious food and having to walk from the cabins to the bathrooms. Hallie said, "My cabin would gather in the common space and tell stories and talk for hours before bed." Brian and John remembered pioneer skills. "We learned to build a fire with a flint and steel. I'm not sure how useful that's been, but it's the only time I've done it." Emily said, "My friends remember archery, campfire songs, the team ropes course, and learning how to pick up tennis balls from a canoe." Rachel remembered square dancing and singing camp songs too, and meeting a student from another school who became a best friend. Nicole shared, "For me, it was being able to see the kids from other schools and getting to do the dances and the signing of the shirts and everything that we did at the end." From Sarah, "Oh my gosh, my favorite memories were of Camp Whitewood and the haunted cabin that they'd ever put the kids in. At night, we'd try to look through the windows, and of course, everyone thought they saw something. I still know all the words to some of the campfire songs we would sing. I just remember crying on the bus coming home because I didn't want to leave." From Kristen, "My first thought about 6th grade camp is that I was lucky enough to get to go twice. As a 6th grader, I think we were super lucky that our camp was five days long. What I remember most is getting to do the team-building activities outdoors. I remember we were put into random groups and had to figure out how to use everyone's best skill sets to accomplish the tasks or the obstacle course-type activities. I remember thinking that was really fun and learning new things about people. I also know how we loved being in the cabins and felt super cool being away from home and having extra time hanging out with friends, even though we probably all missed home in reality. We liked going to the dining hall and all the nighttime activities. They did a really great job of making the most of the time and keeping us busy in the evening hours. I remember bonfires and sing-alongs, square dancing, and a lot of being outside. Then, as a senior, I had the opportunity to volunteer to work at camp and was there with a big friend group, and we loved being the camp counselors and helping the younger students. It was the best volunteer experience ever." Jennifer, a fairly recent camper, mentioned leaf identification, the importance of staying on the path, and learning to whistle through an acorn during a nature walk. She also remembered the fun little games like Simon says that they played in the dining hall and getting to run around the tables with the flag they won. Mr. Ken Buckley, former teacher, administrator, and parent chaperone, recalled, "I remember Rick Danberg being in charge all those years, and he did indeed play his horn. I loved going as a teacher in the fall since it was a great opportunity to bond with my new class of students. I was able to use our common camping experiences to relate to science curriculum that my students encountered later in the year." And Cindy said, "I think of all my kids, they all have their camp shirts that everyone signed. I found my son's in a box just a couple of months ago when he was getting ready to move." A special thank you and tip of the Mentor Schools' history hat to Mr. Danberg. Have a great week, campers. You're in great company with Cardinals past and present. Speaking of the great outdoors, the Fresh Air Challenge is back October 17th to November 1st. For our pre-K through 5th grade students, the special program sponsored by the Mentor Schools Foundation encourages kids to have some screen-free time under the big blue sky. Stay tuned for all the details coming very soon. And next week is Homecoming Week at Mentor High School, and our students and staff are preparing for exciting activities consisting of a spirit week, pep assembly, parade, football game, and their dance on Saturday, September 21st. Last year, the school had about 1,500 teens attend the dance, and we're looking forward to seeing our students come together again this year. We are off and running and ready to learn, and we look forward to a wonderful year.
Thank you very much. At this time, we have the Chief Financial Officer's report and recommendations.
Madam President, Members of the Board, Mr. Heath, it is our annual requirement, statutory requirement, to get the FY '25 annual appropriations completed and approved. So we'll present that to the Board. I will mention, last Thursday, we presented this to the Citizens Financial Advisory, and they do recommend the Board's consideration and approval of the appropriations. Our appropriations are built, they start actually in January. You know, we start this process in January when the Board approves the tax budget is the first action of the Board in January. Thank you, Mr. Heath. I don't want Ms. Muzika yelling at me again. So then we go into March when we get the certifications done for the new rates, and then, obviously, that's when we start to build the budget. This process starts in the spring with the building principles and the directors, and Mr. Heath and his team, starting to look at our appropriations, because our goal is to get them pretty much done by the end of the fiscal year. So when we adopt our temporary appropriations at the June, usually end of June, June 30th meeting, that we're pretty much adopting what our appropriations are going to be. We aren't required by law to adopt the full appropriations till September, and we use that time then to really solidify the hiring process through the HR department, so that when we bring the appropriations to the Board in the community in September, that it's as close as we can believe it to be for the actual year. So obviously, a lot of that work's done, and it kind of goes back to our strategic plan and our new strategic plan, which was approved at the last Board meeting. When it comes to the budgeting principles, really, from our standpoint, it kind of goes to Outcome Five, which I shared with the community last month, and really, we're trying to maximize the district efficiency and efficacy, and we're doing that so that we can operate at peak capacity by providing knowledge, skills, and resources necessary to reach the desired student outcomes. So when we build our budget, and we're looking at staffing, and we're looking at all the things that we're doing, it really goes back to the strategic plan, and specifically for my office, we're looking at the maximization of the district efficiencies and efficacy. When you think about it from what we did before in our old strategic plan, the two guiding principles that continue to move forward with us as we go into our new strategic plan, is we have to maintain and enhance our fiscal stability by focusing our attention and diligence on short-term, which is really what our appropriations are. It is our short-term goals for the year, as well as our long-term financial planning, which we update the Board and community on in November and May. And we always have to remember that there's options for alternative revenue and to maximize our existing personnel, facilities, and resources, so that we're running again with that efficiency and efficacy that we spoke of. We've continued to have our budgeting principles of all fiscal decisions should be made in the context of the five-year forecast, that long-term planning. We know that there's management options attached to every dollar that we spend. We know that every dollar spent must add value to teaching and learning, and we must aggressively focus on our largest expense areas, which are salaries, benefits, and special education. Trying to catch up here, hard to see behind me. And our facilities. And we know that quality's always cheaper in the long run. So when we look at kind of where our money comes from, the majority of our revenue comes from our local taxpayer. About 73.1% comes from the form of property tax from our local taxpayers, a resident in our commercial property. We receive another 22.6% from the state. In the general fund, we get very little federal funding. Most of the federal funding, as we talked about at the last Board meeting, is outside of the general fund. It's in restricted fund areas so that it can be tracked. So though, again, this always comes up as a point of contention, it only makes up 0.6% of our general fund. It does actually equate to almost $8 million in total funding, but it's all outside the general fund. And then we have another 3.7% that comes from intermediate and other funds through our investments, our receipts that we have on sale of property that we no longer use, and other revenue streams that come in, like ticket revenue and so on and so forth. When you compare that to the state, obviously, that looks much different. The state average for local revenue is at 42%, and the state percentage is 43%. Because Mentor is considered a wealthy district based on our median income and our property valuation, that burden gets shifted to the local taxpayer. When we look at our year-over-year revenue comparison, ultimately, the bottom right is the most important for this slide when we look at our appropriations. We're expecting our property tax, or total revenue, excuse me, to go up to $110.7 million, or almost $110.8 million, up from last year where we closed out the year at $109.7, almost $109.8 million. Again, majority of that coming from local resources and the state sources that we shared on the last slide. It's important to look, I think, when you look at our revenue, you know, we see relatively flat revenue, but we get very little revenue growth from the way that the state funding is and the way that local property taxes fund schools. We do see a little bit of increases, I've shared a number of times, on the inside milage with the property valuations. You know, as we've said, you know, the valuations of the district have went up by 25%. We're only going to see a small increase in value coming on inside milage to the district in tune of less, right around 2%, which is going to cost the local taxpayer about $42 per $100,000 in market value. So obviously, the next part of the budget, or the most important part of the appropriations, is our expenses. And because we're in the business of educating kids, district enrollment trends are very important in that and projecting that and making sure that we have the staffing ratios that Mrs. Justin shared in her report to meet the strategic plan. Since FY '21, we've seen a decrease in student enrollment, as many of the districts across the state in Lake County have as well. When we look at our trend analysis, again, in our grade bands, you can see that we are starting to see pretty much a leveling off of the kindergarten numbers, and we're seeing the decrease as the larger classes, you know, go through the high schools, start to graduate. You know, we had a graduate class of over 600 kids, I believe, Mr. Heath correct, last year, and we only had 448 kids come into the district, which is pretty on par statistically with our birth rate ratio that we have, because we look at that. We look at the live birth rate five years ago, and we look at how many of the kids are coming in, and we're close to, you know, consistently in the upper 90s, almost to 100%. Sometimes we go over, and that trend has been pretty consistent over the last 10 years, even going back to 2014. So that's something that we look at. You look at the live birth rate, and you look at the kids that show up then from, you know, five years later, and the kindergarten rate. So we look at it as a standpoint, it's okay, we're starting to see where that trend is going, and obviously, that impacts us, where it impacts us in staffing. So here's where we look at our EMOS reporting for the various codes, you know, and they're on the screen. The big piece here is that our staffing is going down 2.94% this year. A majority of that reduction is, again, in this on the screen, just to clarify for the Board and the community, this is for every fund. This isn't just general fund. So we've talked about this in the past. The ESER support staff that was being put in place over the last few years because of COVID to kind of close those achievement gaps, this is the first year that they're no longer here because those funds have run out, and Mr. Heath and his team made the determination that we would find other ways to support students who have gaps, because we did close quite a bit of those gaps. We know gaps still exist, but that's more in the purview of our superintendent than myself. Myself is to look at kind of where that puts us financially, and we see that that staffing has continued to decrease.
Mr. Wade, does that 2.9% include the ESER-funded teachers then?
It does, yeah. So that's total staff out of all funds. Does that decrease? So, you know, this is a graph that I have shown in the past. The orange line shows the decline in enrollment in the district since 2009. So this isn't something that's just come out of nowhere. We've been seeing this decline in enrollment since prior to even my first stint here in the district. But you can see that going back to Dr. Hoynes and Mr. Miller and Mr. Porter, we have a decreasing staff ratio too, because that represents the blue line. You can see during COVID in '21, we saw an increase of staffing. That was so that we could open school back up for the '21-'22 school year, and we had smaller class sizes, so we added staff, and then we had the ESER teachers in, and you can see then again, after that '21-'22 school year, we went kind of back down to the normal trends of decreasing enrollment and decreasing staffing. This is through fiscal year '23. The '24 data will be released from the state here in probably November, December, and I will update the Board and the community on this chart again, because it's just something that we continue to track to make sure that we're being consistent. Reason being is 83.4% of our budget, as this slide shows, comes from salary and benefits. And because 83.4% of our budget comes from salary and benefits, it's highly important that we continue to make sure that our enrollment and staffing ratios are going in the same direction and in proportion. You can see that the other major area that we have in the district is purchased services. That's 10.5% of our budget, and those are the services that we purchase to support student learning and running the district. Then we have our supplies coming in at 4%. So if you want to see the numbers, the last column, you can see there's a five-year trend here of the actuals from fiscal year '21 through fiscal year '24, what we're budgeting. I share this with the community so that you can kind of see the trends that we're having, and most importantly, that we're looking to appropriate about $115.671 million, which is up 3.44% from last year, so right around the inflationary increase. Those numbers assume the staffing numbers that we had before. The salaries includes the 2.75% increase that the negotiated agreement has. It also has a 7% increase for projected growth on healthcare in January 1, because our healthcare rates will change in January. We'll have clear numbers on that as we go into the November forecast update, and it does assume the increases in staffing, even that Mr. Heath had shared with us with regards to transportation with three drivers and two aides, correct?
Correct.
It does include one certified staff member reduction and a reduction in a classified position as well. The bottom line, just as a point of reference, because we've always kind of looked at this because prior to this year, this is, again, the first year that we haven't made a large transfer out of the general fund to support either the capital improvement fund or because of the retirement incentive. So if you normalize that and you normalize it out for the net reserve to the five-year capital plan and retirements, we see an increase of 6.57% from last year from a budget to actual. Again, looking at graphs, these graphs allow us to kind of quickly analyze and kind of check ourselves to make sure that we don't see anything out of the ordinary, so I think they're important to share with the community and the Board, because I would hope that if you saw something that stands out, let's just say like fiscal year '23, and we see that it's much higher than the rest of the areas, we should be able to explain that, right? That's the job of the Board and the community, to continue to make sure that they're checking on the work that we're doing. And if we remember, in '23, that's the year we made the decision, instead of making annual contributions to the capital plan, we made the decision to move it all at once and then stretch that out rather than doing it annually. I think you can see from the budgeted appropriations that we have in fiscal year '25, there's nothing that's really atypical with the prior-year trends. So again, it's just another check, visual check, for those of us who are more visual than, rather than numerical, looking at those things. It's important to also remember that our Board has a policy that states that we must have a 15% budget reserve, and part of that policy is that we actually have a general operating, a general fund operating budget reserve fund. That fund is, cannot exceed 5% of the prior year's revenue. So by policy and by law, and we're audited on this, the general fund operating budget reserve can't exceed $5.481 million. So with that, looking at our interest income over the last few years, we have to keep a close eye on that interest income, and it can't exceed about $55,000, because if we do, we'd have to then have Board action to reduce that fund, because the money in that fund can only be spent with Board action per policy. So again, going back all the way to your fiscal year 2016, when we passed our last new money levy, you can see that the cash balance was increasing because we were not deficit spending at that time, and that continued to go on through fiscal year '20. Our first year deficit spending was in fiscal year '21, and we've continued that trend, and we continued that trend into this fiscal year '25 budget that we're looking for appropriation approval. The bottom line is then, last year, we reduced, because of the deficit spend, the general fund balance from 59, or $55.9 million to $53.8 million approximately. The approximate $4 million in deficit spending that we're going to potentially observe this year, if the budget holds true, would then bring us down to an ending balance of $48.9 or $48.89 million in cash reserve. We'll have encumbrances at the end of the year. Remember, encumbrances is money that's been, because we're cash basis, is money that we have spent, but the check hasn't been sent out yet because we haven't received the good or service. So that causes us to have encumbrances at the end of the fiscal year. That, you know, you take that into account, and you take into account that our policy states that, again, you as a Board cannot allow our budget reserve to fall below the general fund cash set aside, which is $11.3 million. So you add the general fund reserve to that, which was about $5.4 million, to that $11.3, so we're looking at about $16.9 million is the floor by policy that the Board has that we can't fall below in the way that we're spending. So when you take that, all that into consideration, so you take the encumbrances out, you take the general fund cash set aside out, and you don't include the budget reserve, our cash balance is $37.5 million at the end of the fiscal year. When we look at, just to kind of reiterate and kind of bring everything together, our appropriations are tied to our forecast. You know, the May forecast is, you know, the first part of, again, that budgeting process, and that we're forecasting out kind of where our budget is. I am happy to announce that we're within 1.6%. The current appropriations is going to exceed the forecast for May. I would expect that by the end of the fiscal year, we will not spend the $15.6 million. We've typically been about 2% or 3% below the actual appropriation, so it's a pretty accurate reflection, but when you look at it, again, I think this is something that the Board should look at. When you, a Board of Education should be looking at, okay, and keeping me honest and checking me on, all right, what's our forecast say? What does the appropriations say? Do they align? Are they close? And again, that's why every month, when I give my monthly financials, I show it versus, this is what we spent last year at this time, this is what we received in revenue last year at this time, this is where we were year-to-date, and this is how it compares against our forecast. So these are all checks and balances to make sure that we as a community and a Board are aware of where we're at and where we're headed, so that we don't get into a healthy situation or some of the other districts that have had some financial crises, because we weren't checking, everyone wasn't doing their checks and balances that we have going on. So we are a little bit higher than we were looking in May. So we are a little bit higher than we were looking in May. Again, I wouldn't mind having, what is that, about $1.9 million? That's a lot of money to everybody in this room. However, when you're looking at $150 million budget, it's only a difference of 1.6%, so it's not material. And again, I think when we get down to the actual spending and looking at where we're at, even in November, we'll see a difference of that in reality. And I always think it's important, again, as part of the appropriations, and I know we've had this discussion in the past with regards to the capital plan. We present this in June to the board and to the community, but the part of the appropriations for this fiscal year is that capital plan. And I think what the key is here is that we've identified safety and maintenance improvements, and we, you know, this is just really what we need to do to maintain the safety and the maintenance of the facilities. And that exceeds our PI levy by about $1.8 million. And then we are, you know, we have our technology purchases, furniture purchases, and our vehicle purchases. But, you know, we know this year that we're not doing furniture, and we're not doing buses. And we do need to replace one of our trucks, so that's included. So that's another about $700,000 in costs. So it's about a $3.5 million cost to the district when we only have a permanent improvement levy that covers about $1 million of that. I am sharing a little bit of what we're looking at kind of going forward because I think it's important in here, in this situation with the appropriations, to show that our average costs that we're projecting and even spending this year is about $2 million less than it was prior to the failure of the PI levy that was put on the ballot in November. So decisions have been made, reductions have, and we will stretch that money further than we were expecting. So again, I'm happy to answer any questions on the appropriations, which specifically relates to the all funds, the expected budgets that you'll see at the back of the appropriations document that I've shared with you. Again, this was presented to our citizens' financial advisory last Thursday and was recommended for approval by the Board of Education.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Sorry, I put it in the wrong spot. I got it cut off here. I apologize. Ms. Jesslyn?
Yes.
Ms. Payne?
Yes.
Ms. Apolo?
Yes.
Ms. Marchaza?
Yes.
Ms. Cook?
Yes.
Motion carry 5-0. That concludes my section.
Thank you. Do we have any unfinished business that the board would like to address?
The only thing that I had is I had asked Mr. Heath for an update on the retired SRO resource officers. So I know we're looking forward to hopefully by next month that we may be able to vote on that. I know it's something that in March of 2022, when we, because I'm getting questions about, you know, can we arm our staff? And we had, at least three of us on the board, who were on the board at that time in 2022, agreed to not do that. And the reason why I had agreed to not do that, and I think we all support looking into the different option of, you know, hiring retired police officers for our buildings. So I'm looking forward to hopefully by next month, we would be able to vote on that contract and have something available for that.
Yeah, just to give everybody a quick update, about six weeks ago, I sat down and met with Chief Gunch and Mr. Filippiac, and we kind of talked through the contract that we had presented to our school safety liaisons back at, I think, the May or June meeting. We spent a lot of time talking through the contract. We did some wordsmithing. I actually, about a week after that meeting, rewrote the contract language with some of the changes that we made, sent that over to legal counsel just to make sure that they could review everything. With the school and transportation issues, you know, here the last four weeks, we just reconnected on this a few days ago. Our legal counsel still has a few things they want to share with me regarding some of the edits before we bring it back to our school safety committee, which I believe we've sent out that request to try and get our group back together. So hopefully, we'll have that here in the next couple of weeks. I know some of our, some of the concerns are still around the liability pieces. That was one of the things that was shared with the board previously. I think, again, across the board, we've, we've all said, all five of you have said that this is something we want to have done. So I'll be working with, with our legal counsel tomorrow morning. I've got a meeting set up with them. Again, very hopeful that we'll have that contract ready to go for our October meeting.
Great, thank you. That's all I had.
I was just looking for the new no-cell bell-to-bell hard data. I want to see if it's working for seeing major benefits.
Oh, the data with it. And I know we're meeting next week to talk code of conduct type pieces to the puzzle. So let me, I'll add that to our list here too to make sure that we have some of that data available. That'll be good to add to the presentation in November.
Mm-hmm. Perfect. And then also the policy on student discipline with, during summer months, we could, that's something to bring up next week or at that meeting.
Is there any other unfinished business? Okay, do we have any new business? All right, next we have hearing of the public on any topic.
Since I only have three minutes to speak, I figured I'd give you some feedback on the community, from the community regarding the incident that happened last week. Mr. Heath, you should pay close attention since you are highlighted in most of these comments and concerns. From NF, why is it even a question that the student be allowed back in the school stating he wished he was the Georgia school shooter? The student should continue education under proper supervision. From MM, it seems the school is more afraid of a lawsuit than they are of, than the student hurting people. From NF, the student has no business stepping in that school again. Whatever happened is zero tolerance. From JM, Google restorative justice in schools, this is our superintendent's approach. He said in many school board meetings that we cannot suspend our way out of these problems. He also said that out of 500 incidences in the school, only 26 students were the main culprit. Protecting children is not his main priority. The board and the superintendent have repeatedly supported the leftist political agenda regarding transgender and LGBTQ for fear of litigation. From RJ, the current school super needs to step down and be removed immediately. He is not safe for our students, nor is he concerned for their safety. Please join in praying this guy out of the school system along with three out of the five board members. Our children are not safe, our school system deserves better. From JB, how is a mental health evaluation not mandatory for this? This is a blaring red flag and we hear about after the tragedy occurs. From DB, this is a perfect example of a threat to the safety of the school. This male sounds mental and evaluation should be mandatory. He cannot be anywhere near the high school or any school. They are overprotecting him, and I find it ridiculous that the police officer refers to him as a biological, that refers to the biological male as a she. I sure hope this doesn't end in a tragedy. With Heath in charge, you have to pray for our students and their safety since he is too woke to stand up to expel this student. From DF, I hate to say this, but if he wasn't so greedy and selfish and didn't want to extend contract with raises and bonuses and immunity from any lawsuit, maybe we could put more efforts into keeping our kids safe. But he's so wonderful because he visited school bus stops the first day of school. I'm livid. From MI, Heath better do something before it's too late. These trans kids have mental health issues that need to be addressed. Changing genders should be the least of their worries. The school and their parents have failed them. The kid threatened men are high after fighting girls. When is Heath going to open his eyes and finally do something? Last but not least, Heath, you wouldn't know vigilance if it smacked you in the face. I blame you, sir. You don't have the balls to expel this student permanently. This is the third altercation this student has been involved in, two, two of which occurred in a girl's bathroom, and we have him coming back on the 13th for the sake of inclusivity? Sir, you and your three woke school board members make me want to vomit. Let me remind you that there are 2,160 students, and their blood is on your hands, sir. When, when, not if this student decides to shoot up the school. Hope you sleep well tonight for the sake of inclusivity.
For a superintendent and school board that claims safety is the number one issue, I am perplexed to say the least by the actions that have been taken in regards to the threat on the school last Thursday. According to the police report, the student who made the threat is the very same boy that was videoed in an incident unprovoked violently attacking a female student in our lunchroom last year. Prior to that incident, the same boy identifying as a girl was also videotaped in the girl's bathroom in an altercation with girls that clearly did not want a boy in their private space. At that time, you board members voted down a policy that would have restricted boys in the girl's bathroom. Now, in a new school year, the same boy is in a physical fight with girls in the girl's bathroom, then threatened to burn the school down. This all comes one day after the student in Georgia shot and killed four people during school. And in this police report, it states that he wishes he was the Georgia school shooter. Mr. Heath, your email regarding this threat to the school in no way conveyed the full details of this incident. I have to wonder if your staff was at all informed adequately of the possible danger. This boy should not be allowed to return to our school. Gender dysphoria is a mental illness. Students should not be expected to tolerate losing their rights to privacy for mental delusions. This boy has proven to be violent and confrontational with girls at our school, and this is completely unacceptable. A policy is needed prohibiting biological boys from using the girl's bathroom. I urge you to take action immediately for the safety of our students. I am tired of hearing from our superintendent on crucial issues that he's working on that. We have been waiting over two years for resource officers, and there is no excuse for what has transpired at the short amount of time that since school has started. I expect policies to be made that make this school a safe space for all, not based on gender theories but on biological fact. Now, on a positive note, I'd like to congratulate Annie Payne for being a semifinalist nationally for the Moms for Liberty founders, Penelope Barker Award for mobilizing. Lake County Moms for Liberty members were so motivated by your unwavering dedication and determination to stand up for our children's safety and innocence that hundreds of community members wrote heartfelt letters of recommendation nominating you for the national award. Please know that we appreciate you and stand with you in this difficult time. You have withstood disgraceful attacks with dignity and grace for simply doing what you were elected to do, which is to make policies to protect our children and rights as parents in a time when school boards want to hire out this responsibility to politically motivated organizations instead of taking responsibility and listening to those that elected them. Your courage to make policies to ensure age-appropriate materials are in our schools is precisely what needs to be done. In the face of such a strong political agenda-driven majority board, you stand out as a true champion for our children and parents. We are so blessed to have you as a board member who is not just there to say yes on whatever comes down the line from state or federal bureaucrats, but actually researches and understands what our schools are using to educate this next generation and where and how our tax dollars are being used to accomplish the goals of our community. You are a shining example of what a public servant should be, and we are honored to support your vigilant efforts. Know that there is an army nationwide ready to support you in your fight. Thank you, Annie, and may God bless you and give you strength to continue this most important mission.
Thank you. Thank you.
Lindsay Wall.
Hello again. I just wanted to speak about student safety and especially about the incident last week where there was a boy in the girl's bathroom and there was a fight. And I just, I wanted to say that I, I hope that the girls that defended their space, I hope that everybody here reaches out to them and sends them a dozen roses and a thank you because it's sad for me to know that there are girls that go to school and they have to defend themselves to protect their space because the adults will not do it for them. They could do it, but they refuse, and it's wrong. I, I feel like we should have student resource officers, and I love Mr. Wade's presentation and Ginny's presentation because you get to see the kids and how the money's spent. But really, at the end of the day, it doesn't mean anything because you're letting a guy go into a girl's room and you're pretending like that's okay. You lie to the children. Sometimes the truth is hard, but the kids need to hear it. This person that was in this fight last week, he has been failed by so many people in his life that should have been speaking the truth. All families are going to do what they're going to do. But when you send your kids to school, that's a place where the, you know, teachers and all the adults in there can help, they can speak the truth and say, there's nothing wrong with you the way that you were born, and I'm going to guide you in the right way. Somebody's feelings might get hurt, somebody might feel like that's unkind. Lying is not kind. It is not loving. These children, we need resources, we need money, we need all these things. But at the end of the day, these kids are in an unsafe environment. We need to do better. I find it terribly disconcerting and disgraceful that, that this could happen and then the kid is not even expelled. He should be expelled. We hear all the time from people in the community that, oh, you know, these trans kids, these gender-confused kids, they just need acceptance. They're totally safe. They're not. They're the ones that are starting, they're, they're being videotaped being violent. We have some parents here that pick up their own students and bring them here to confront law-abiding citizens that want to speak at the meeting. Those, those kids aren't safe. They're the ones that are causing the problem. You need to do better, and it's hard, and you might suffer for it politically or socially, but you owe the children to do the right thing and speak the truth. Thank you, Annie and Rose, for always doing what I'm sure is very difficult. I appreciate you. Thank you.
I'm usually better at improvisation, so I'm just going to do that. We're the only part of the community that's going to stand up and speak about the threat that was made. This is my alma mater, my oldest graduated from this school. To see how horribly it's changed as far as accountability for one's actions in the name of restorative justice is just disheartening. I'm going to speak from my heart. I'm not here to attack you, but I am here to make you well aware of how this community sees you. Now, as a mother, I had to take advantage of the Ed choice, okay? I'm not low-income, and I admit that. And I am so grateful that those rules have changed to allow not only low-income families, but families such as myself, who is blessed, who works hard. And it gave me the opportunity, a golden opportunity, to take my son out of a school district that I don't feel is safe. When we have a student, a violent student, this is not potentially violent, this kid is violent. When he says he wants to burn the very building down, that all of these children and your faculty and you guys are in this building, we're all in this building right now. I've been to some beautiful concerts with my son in Wind Ensemble. He graduated from this school. It was absolutely beautiful, and I would hate to see this school burnt. I would hate to see any child die. And if, when we have students saying, I'm a girl, no, you're not. You are not a girl. You beat up a girl and left her with a concussion, alongside of her lunch, she got a concussion. How do you explain that to the parents? I'm sorry you sent your kid to school, but this boy who thinks he's a girl beat her up with his very male fists. And then he's in the bathroom, and these poor girls are getting disciplined because they have to defend their safe space. They are clearly not comfortable with this male in their bathroom or any male. There are gender-neutral bathrooms in this school, and they should be using it, but they're not. Why aren't these trans kids using those safe spaces for them that are designated for them? Because they don't want to. They want to make these girls uncomfortable by any means. And I would hate to see him emulate a mass murderer, a school shooter. And I would hate to see him emulate a mass murderer, a school shooter, because we have seen that before. We have seen that with Columbine, Uvalde, and we don't need to sit here and say, well, it's the guns' problem, because guns don't kill people. People kill people, and it's the good guys, like the police officers, that are here, that actually were the good guys that stopped these kids. So please, I am begging you, start listening to your community members. I don't hate not a one of you out there and up there, I don't, but I will speak out when I see fit. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I just add something real quick? I can't see the speaker from here, so for the next meeting, maybe, can we?
Move that.
Yeah, because even if I, I can't see from here.
You couldn't see last time, right? No, last time they moved it after.
Oh, they did move it.
Oh.
Maybe just one in the middle.
Yeah.
It's just like, I see the podium.
Hi, Lynn Mazika. I was made aware through some things on Facebook that there had been an incident involving some students in the girls' bathroom. And I think this is something that bothers all of us, because all of our students should be safe in our schools. And from what I understand, we, it's a common problem in bathrooms, not only in Menter, but in many other places. And I respectfully ask that possibly we consider either permanently or for a period of time having monitors in the bathrooms to try to, or at the doors of the bathrooms, to try to keep the problems from going, from continuing. It doesn't matter who was involved in the situation. Nope.
Please, we have a speaker.
No one deserves to feel unsafe. No one deserves to be hurt in Menter schools. And I know it's a very important issue to the board and to this community, but the issue is all students need to feel safe. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our last speaker is Kim Rowan. That concludes our public participation.
All right, we do not have an executive session on the agenda, so do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
Mr. Wade, please call the roll.
Ms. Payne?
Yes.
Ms. Iapolo?
Yes.
Ms. Jesslyn?
Yes.
Ms. Marchaza?
Yes.
Ms. Cook?
Yes.
Meeting is adjourned at 8:30 PM.